Welcome to the gallery, ladies and gentlemen. And we just call, uh, to order the names of being called, uh, Devonport City Council tonight, then Monday twenty fourth of November, twenty twenty five. Welcome to those in the gallery. Um, so apologies, we do have councillor Ennis tonight, if not, we have rest of our wonderful councillors here, thank you. Uh, Devonport City Council acknowledges and pays respect to the Paddlewood Packer of Fenton. I'll watch the traditional and original owners of Blatchwood Way there and continually discuss it in its plain and watch your gather. We also acknowledge and pay our respects to the testimony and original owners past and present. All persons in attendance and vice versa is council policy to record council meetings in accordance with council's digital recording policy. The digital recording and the meeting will be made available to the public on council's website for a minimum period of six months. The meeting will also be live streamed on council's YouTube channel. Uh, are there any declarations of interest from the councils?
Yes ma'am.
Um, councillor Murphy?
Uh, I'll declare an interest in agenda item four point one. I am engaged by the remain in my professional capacity as a real estate consultant, therefore I will be leading your own.
Thank you. Any other declarations of interest from the councillors? All good. Thank you. Uh, item three is procedural, three point one is confirmation of minutes, no have a notice of remuneration, thank you.
Second.
Councillor Murphy and councillor Martin, councillor Murphy.
Um, yes, procedural man.
Thank you, councillor Martin.
Nothing further there, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any comments or questions from councillors? If not, I will ask councillor Murphy to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
And against? Kerry and Anna Ashley, thank you. Three point two point one is responses to questions posed at Prime Eighty Seven nil. Three point two point two is questions and notice from the topic, if I can have a move. Councillor Varnie was such, thank you. Ennis taking the place of speaker. Councillor Wilczynski, councillor Varnie.
Thank you ma'am. Uh, a couple of excellent questions there from Mr Velikoff and, um, reasonable responses from the council of officers, thank you.
Thank you councillor Varnie, councillor Wilczynski.
Yes, nothing further, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from the councillors? If not councillor Varnie to close.
Uh, consider it closed, thank you ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Kerry and Anna Ashley, thank you. Three point two point three is questions that are noticed from the public. Uh, if anybody from the gallery would like to come up and ask some questions, please come over to the podium. State your name and address and then your question both.
My name is Sarah Jones Watchford and I live at one hundred and seventeen Nichols Street, Devonport. Um, good evening councillors, thank you for taking our questions tonight. This is the first time I've done this, so I might be a little bit nervous. But I know some familiar faces here and that's really, um, really lovely to hear about.
And to debate about it.
I would like to know, um, how the council plans to support small business during the rollout of the new parking requirements in Devonport. And where there is a failure to ensure accessibility for people wishing to pay with legal tender, how this is going to be met going forward? My small business is located at ninety C Old Ava Street in the Fourways. I run a small organic bulk foods business which is very busy, um, and we've worked really hard to build our business since twenty twenty two. Um, and over the last couple of weeks since the rollout of the parking meters, I have noticed a really big downturn in our foot traffic. The parking bays on our side of this road are empty at times of day when they are normally full. And we are also noticing our customers continuously commenting on the failure to provide them with an option, um, within that parking bay area to pay with legal tender. Um, in the timeframe of one hour, and this last week, last week, notably weeks after the rollout of the new parking, six vehicles I witnessed pull up, walk between the new touch interface and back to the now defined coin operated meter and then get back in their car and drive off without even looking at the small businesses that are on that side of the street. Some of these people are my customers and I know, I notice them are really good with faces, I recognise and remember people really well. Um, so this was bringing me some concern. I'm also being faced by our customers remarking that they might have a whole list of things that they need to get done in our store today. But they don't want to pay with their card, they don't like the new interface. They literally just grabbed the first thing off the top of their list and commented that they need to go, there's no interaction, there's no conversation because they're just looking out the window and making sure they don't get a parking ticket. Um, this is an area of significant frustration for myself and for my customers and for what I've witnessed general public, um, in town as well. We have had someone visit when I wasn't in store, unfortunately, with a list of instructions that was seemingly for business owners to provide to the local public. Um, I have put one on my window because I feel like I have, um, a duty of care. And if there's elderly people, even trades in the front of my store, I'll pop out and let them know what the situation is. That's the, that's the nursing me, I'll always be that person. Um, but I don't have time to do that all the time. And I do have concerns that that role of shops will significantly be impacted. There is coin pa- payment across the road, but from where we are, we are fairly isolated. Um, as in people need to walk down, cross the road or all the way back up to the same le- level again to pay for coin payment. Otherwise they're crossing illegally in a really busy part of the Fourways. We are right opposite the reject shop, just within twenty metres, if not like fifteen metres from the traffic, uh, lights. So I feel like there's concern there, people rushing across with their children, elderly people trying to get across with their walking devices and things like that as well. Um, I would like the council to please listen to our concerns as small business owners, operators in Devonport. We do bring a lot to this community. And I would like to, the council to please provide adequate, adequate cons- consultation to small business owners. I myself have sent four emails. I've called three times to try and talk to somebody and I haven't had a single response other than reassurance from the ladies on the desk who are really lovely, um, and have been so thoughtful in their response. But I'd really like to talk to someone to put an action in place.
Thank you.
For listening.
Well done. No problem at all.
It's true, ma'am. Yeah, thank you for the feedback. Yeah, it's good to, to hear that. Um, it's important that we get, um, probably our parking coordinator to meet with you and, and talk through some of those, those things. We, um, yeah, we, we acknowledge, you know, any change on this is, is, um, comes with its challenges and certainly now that we think once the new technology is bettered down, it will be a, a better system, but we're happy to work through that. All of the machines across all the car parks and all the meters are now consistent and they all take, uh, coins, the app and credit card. Um, and then there is the, the virtual meters that we have that we use, the, the files as well. But, um, it's probably best, maybe if we get someone to come and like, um, look at the store and just go through your city issues and, and, um, go from there.
And then that's, uh, anything that, uh, do you have this, the pushing of this to?
Yes, well, yeah, I'd be interested with shop, people might contact you and get.
Thank you. Any other, uh, questions from the gallery? Lovely. Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. No, you're right. Just state your name and address and.
Uh, my name's Tara Dowling. Um, I live at seventy three Haven Drive in Shearwater. Um, I'm the manager at Cat Mandu in Devonport and my concern is very similar. Uh, we have a lot of people coming into us not knowing how to use the parking. And we go out and we help them, but a lot of these people are elderly who have coins who either have to cross the road or go down to the end of Brook Street, remember their registration number, remember, remember the, the number on the side of the wall to be able to pay for their parking. I have three or four people daily who get back in their car and drive away. At a later day, he said, I can't work it out, I'm going to Matt's Car Park to, to park. Um, so I'm just continually getting, um, feedback like this. So my concern is for retailers to stay open, we need footfall, we need people coming wandering and it's not happening. Um, I'm not sure if any other people in the Brook Street are struggling, but, but as a, this is a very busy retail environment than I'm in. Or a destination store, people come to us, we're very lucky, but I just don't have wanderers because no one's coming into Devonport. But also too, I've parked for over ten years in the Payne Avenue Car Park, I now can't get a parking spot. So I arrive at quarter to nine and I, I have to drive around. I have been parking in the school zone and make sure that I'm left by, um, ten thirty, oh, sorry, two thirty to pa- to move my cars so I don't get booked. So this is a real concern for workers when stores start to close because they're not meeting their targets, um, we are then not a living city anymore. Going to be like, um, burning, we're going to have hardly any shops open. That's my concern. I'll see Devonport thrive as a living city. But I'm really concerned with this parking for the, um, the workers as well as the customers in the local area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get to, if you, is that to Robert, you, Tara, we'll get to Monchil also.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want any other questions from the gallery?
Yes, I'd like to speak. My name's Cherie, sorry, Cherie Eves. I live at one hundred and twenty seven Nichols Street in Devonport. I have a small business on Brook Street, just up the road from Cat Mandu or twenty five Brook Street, it's once upon a time boutique. We have noticed this, also have noticed a significant downturn in our trade and foot traffic since the installation of the new parking meters. It's, we, we daily, we see people struggling and unable to cope. The one directly out the front of us is cashless and people just cannot figure it out. We had one gentleman who was a visitor from Queensland, I think he was a, um, return visitor, he'd been to Tasmania several times before, he was there with his wife. He was used to the technology, he had the app to do it and he struggled, well, he ended up, he couldn't. He put his number plate in four times and was unable to get the machine to work. So he gave up in frustration and left. He said the last time he'd been in Devonport, he'd been booked and he wasn't coming back. We've had lots of comments from others, similar comments from other people out the front that are struggling trying to understand how to use it. I think part of the problem is, I know that there's a one across the road, parking meter across the road that takes coins, but there's absolutely no signage to tell people that they can go out. People are so confused. They don't know that they can go across the road and use that. There's also one, I think, up right at the top in front of Aroma, but a lot of people can't always walk that far or want to dash across in front of traffic. They just, it's just a bit too much for them to, a lot of elderly folks struggle. Um, I myself, I refuse to use a cashless. I haven't got this, a phone that I can do cashless with. I like to use coins, but it is so complex to try and figure out, you've got to remember a four digit number as well as your own number plate. By the time you get to the parking meter, you can't, and that's been the trouble with quite a few people that we've noticed. Um, myself and my mother and Catherine notice daily people that just, they just don't understand it. And they don't understand that they can also use a coin one across the road, but it's just so confusing. And to compound all this, we've got the trouble with the car park, the Payne Avenue Car Park directly behind us and some of the others, since the multi-storey car park has lost the all-day parking at the cheaper rate. All the city workers have just inundated the car park. And there's nothing left for customers. If they want to park all day and go on a heavy shopping spree, they can't. There's just nothing there as well as the local, people that work locally, they can't get there. They have to just constantly swap between parks to try and to be able to go work, which they can't even do. And this has been a number of people that haven't been able to make it tonight, other retailers on Brook Street that are all struggling. Businesses that no doubt you probably hear from them as well, a couple of them couldn't make it because they had work and other commitments. It's just untenable. And the car park, I would personally like to see the multi-storey car park revert back to having the all-day parking at the cheaper rate to at least try and relieve a bit problems. Because pretty soon I've heard that we're also going to lose two other car parks. I think the, um, the one down the end of King Street is going to be closed because they'll be building something there. And then the Rod and Formby Road, and then the one in Eden Street will be closing down. I mean, it may not be immediately, but it's just, we've lost probably over fifty percent of our trade because we run a vintage shop and a lot of our business is people walking by and just on the spot. So just as we're one off, we don't have an internet, a high internet presence.
Thanks, Cherie. Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, again, we'll get someone to get in touch, it's all right, to you as a shop. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Catherine Charleston, I live at forty one Rodden Street. I also do some, so early on consultant and once upon a time. Now, my concern with that is the distance with, it was seeming mentioned before, how far parking meter, how far you have to go to pay the, at the parking meters? That's just too far for a lot of people.
So do you have a question for us?
Okay, that's all right. All right, so, so what can be done about the distance that people have to walk to pay? And well, the mention of signage so the people know where there are coin operated slots and what, what about when it's wet and raining? Because if you've got to go so far and everyone's lining up at the same place.
Yeah, thank you, yep. No problem, Catherine, thank you very much. Thank you ladies for coming along, we do appreciate that. It's exactly what the gallery is for, for you to come and ask your questions. So we do appreciate it and someone will reach out to you. Thank you. Uh, further comment from the gallery, if not, we will move on. Thank you. So, uh, three point three is questions from councillors, three point three point one, questions on notice, there are none. Uh, three point two point three is questions for that, notice from councillors. Fine, uh, moving into three point four. Three point four is notice of the moment. Three point four point one is, uh, notice motion from councillor Hollister, future of Devonport will be hers. Want to move that?
So, um, basically, uh.
No, you're right, just, I need to get a second. Thank you councillor Hollister, Enis taking the place?
Second.
Councillor Murphy, thank you. Councillor Hollister.
Basically, this is just asking for a report on the wheelhouse. I believe, should have said, it seems as a matter of these stories, sort of the, at the deadline, this building will become vacant. And I'd like to say where it's going to be very developed tactically. Uh, I'll ask this for a report on the very development of this site in the town gaps.
Thank you councillor Murphy.
Uh, yeah, ma'am, I'll support councillor Hollister and, um, I, I think the report will be pertinent with respect to such a significant asset for Devonport. Um, and hopefully that, that'll be brought to the workshop at some point in time and, and then we can sort of, um, you know, provide some input in further direction. Obviously, it's something we need to be considered from a, um, budgetary perspective. Um, but however, I think we're reporting by our councillors with the necessary detail to make an informed decision on the direction which we should govern.
Thank you. Further comments or questions from the councillors?
Yes, Councillor Wilczynski. I'll be supporting this because it's a prime property and if we don't put it out there, we want to see what's coming or what we can do with it. Then, uh, we'd be on the angle, we've always been ready with plans to do things in our council. And I think this is just one of those things that we can start preparing before we get the use of it. So support this for sure.
Thank you. Further comments from the councillors? If not councillor Hollister to close.
It's in closing, I just think that, um, that's a good idea to get some plans and then hopefully be shovel ready for funding from the federal election or state election in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Kerry and Anna Ashley, thank you. Three point four two, uh, notice motion, then a line trust. Uh, if I can have a move, councillor.
Uh-huh.
Thank you. Enis second. Councillor Wilczynski. Councillor Varnie.
Thank you ma'am. I'll put this motion to council with full knowledge that it is the trustees who make the decisions and that council's role is administrative. Having served extensively on the trust as chair, I'm well aware of both the responsibilities and the area where actions have not been taken. In fulfilling its administrative role, there is an expectation that the motion together with the necessary advice and background work will be formally provided to the trust for its consideration and action as per the motion in collaboration with the trustees and the fund committee. This motion is the only recognised mechanism available to bring forward what has been overlooked for the past seven years. Seven years without fundraising, seven years without promotion and seven years without the governance activity that David needed lines intended. The effectiveness of the trust depends on council's leadership fulfilling its administrative responsibilities. The mayor and deputy mayor automatically appointed as chair and deputy chair have not ensured that meetings are held, rules are reviewed or the fund is promoted. This inaction has led to trust unable to be, uh, unable to act as intended. Meeting rules determine, uh, that the rules are to be reviewed every two years. This has not occurred in the past seven years. There's a requirement to meet every three months, yet only three or four meetings have, have occurred in the last three years. And this is why the motion has been put. Finally, any attempt to move this matter to a council workshop would only risk further delay. If councillors, uh, we need to be updated on what the day needed lines trust fund is all about, it's on council's website. If you need to find any things about the, the trust fund, to be brought up to date to what exactly its role is, well then you have the opportunity to ask the chair or deputy chair. This motion doesn't need to go into a workshop. It is for the trustees who make the decisions to revise meeting books, to conduct a review of the trustee to decide whether they, uh, they still want to be a trustee and if not, uh, the decision should be declared and made vacant, advertising seeking interesting, interesting individuals. And that decision is for the trustees. It should also confirm that the council is not firmly, formally appointed to this trust fund, have admitted to attend meetings. That again is for the trustees to decide. Uh, investigate the opportunity to transfer the day needed lines trust fund uh, to Home Hill Committee under the National Trust with the aim of ensuring the fund is administered by a registered not-for-profit charity that actively honours day needed lines and promotes day needed lines and boarders to the community. That is for the trustees to decide. And I know that the office's comments have asked that perhaps we should take this to a workshop. Well, by all means, if you wish a workshop to be fully informed of what the trust does or especially what the funds for the trust are used for or by all means have a, have a workshop. But that is not anything to do with motion at hand. It is in collaboration with the trustees and the fund committee who actually make those decisions. The councillors who are not informed or haven't been involved with the, uh, trust have not the experience or, uh, the knowledge or the background, uh, to make those decisions. Council and its role as administrator would need to pass this motion on to the trustees for them to action, to them to, uh, investigate and then to make a decision on how to move forward in reference to the trustee and the spirit of the trust. It is two separate things. If you want information, by all means, have a separate workshop. But this motion is about, uh, moving forward and it's about working with the trustees and the trust fund to bring it up to date, as is our duty as per meeting rules. Failure to do so after seven years, uh, would be unthinkable. To delay it to have a, uh, workshop would be also unthinkable because by the time we have the workshop, by the time we talk about it, by the time we get back to the trust, uh, trustees and inform them of what I don't know because it is the trust, trustees and the trust fund that make the decisions, not the workshop. There's no decisions made at workshops, as we all know. So it's just the information that you're seeking or to be brought up to date, by all means, have a separate workshop. This motion isn't about having a workshop. This motion is writing what has not been done over the last seven years. If we fail to act upon it now and get the wheels rolling, it'll be another four months, maybe five months before anything is done. And then we can talk about a change of council towards October and uh, we're off to the races again and everything's delayed again. This motion is ported out, working and collaborating with the trustees and the fund committee with council being an administrator. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wilczynski.
Thank you ma'am. Um, I will be supporting the motion because in twenty twenty two, I put my hand up to be elected, the elected member of the council as a trustee. I did this because I respected, I mean, I did this because I respected the, uh, the Alliance Trusts and what it stands for. And wanting to contribute and wishing to continue the legacy with respect and pride. The trust focuses on community welfare, charitable relief. Um, these are all rooted into the values of service and compassion. It also reinforces Devonport's identity as caring and historically significant council. I don't believe taking this to a workshop would be beneficial. To the trust as there are only three elected councillors who are trustees. And in conjunction with five other community members nominated as trustees. Can make the decisions on behalf of the trust. Devonport City Council is associated with the Dominion Alliance Trusts. Which we have two and they serve different, um, distinct purposes. This one we are talking about tonight. And, um, the United Trust Fund was established from the proceeds of the United Alliance, uh, memoir. Book that, uh, so we take comfort in nineteen sixty-five. To reflect her lifelong commitment to service, compassion and community care. Originally known as the Widows Trust. It created and provided direct assistance to individuals in need within Devonport. Renamed to the United Alliance Trust in two thousand sixteen. Uh, her legacy to honor her legacy, the fund should continue to uphold her values. By supporting residents facing hardship, illness or misfortune in the community. The original, uh, the funding came from the original book royalties and donations. Community contributions and council managed allocations and fundraising campaigns. Until recently, I wasn't aware that the council had fundraising campaigns for this purpose. I personally would like to know more on this part of the councillors and trustees responsibility. Um, councillor Martin's, the Devonport, number one, the responsibility of administration. Administration of the trust is to be managed by the Devonport City Council. Under strict governance and transparency guidelines. That is paramount in whatever we do and the trust is a legal document. So, I think we need to have a look that we are upholding that. Um, number two was the legal document requirements. Only confirm the trustees who are currently on there, want to continue or don't. Or how they want to see the trust happen. And confirm how, um, I was in the last meeting where councillor Martin was not allowed to sit in. Uh, I know you can actually sit in on other committees that you're not involved in. But can't vote, so I'm not sure why he was, um, not allowed to continue in that place. Um, so I'm urging councillors to support this motion so we can actually keep this rolling. In the vision and strength of the United Alliance name and what the trust stands for. Community, respect, pride and her legacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments from the councillors, excuse me. Councillor Hollister, thank you.
Um, I think I said, I think I said the trust, but probably I followed these, this mayor and deputy mayor, um. I found it very restrictive as to what funds could be used for, she did a lot of restrictions, um. If you did anywhere else, something couldn't go, if nothing could be got from anywhere else, the United Trust didn't allow it. So, it's very restricted. I think I definitely want a workshop, um. Just to go forward, so I might develop the relations.
Thank you councillor Martin.
Um, thank you, ma'am. Um. Well, in this notice of motion, this is one of those notice of motions that really boils down to councillors' now role. Um, I look at this notice of motion objectively, um, from three different viewpoints. Um, specifically, um, the fact that irrespective of what we say or do. The trust doesn't have to do anything. So, I think what the, the motion is actually attempting to do is to reactivate the David Alliance Trust. Um, in essence, so that's how I look at this. Um. There, there are a number of things in there that have been addressed by, um, the officer's comments, or in the officer's comments. Specifically, um, yes, I, I agree that councillors would have varying degrees and understanding of what the trust does. However, um, I'm pretty confident that there would be a number of sitting around the table. Who wouldn't know what a number of committees, that if you're not involved in it, you wouldn't have the specific detail of that particular committee anyway. Um, and what's involved in that particular committee, so. Um, whilst I understand the relevance of that, um, and the fact that it may improve, just to go to a council workshop. I think that, um, yes, that there should be a council workshop. However, we're also elected to make a decision and I think that the notice of motion itself, irrespective. That they need, that the trust in itself doesn't have to do anything. It can turn around, council can make a, a resolution. But from my perspective, it would be prudent if, as councillor Martin has highlighted, um, that. In essence, it has been relatively inactive and, and probably hasn't met its charter and its terms of reference. So, obviously, it's calling for a review, which they need to do, um. And as the states there noted, ultimate decision-making powers of the trust rests with the trustees. And therefore, councillors' legal right to action, some of the points may have been limited. However, as council has an administrative function or responsibility for the trust, um. I think the motion in itself, with respect to councillor Martin, there's, there's some things in there that. I think may be outside of our remit, but I think highlighting those things may be of some. Um, advantage to the trust itself to review and to have a look at if they are the concerns. Uh, and again, ultimately, it'll be their decision. It probably does, um, need support for that to occur, in my opinion, um. As I said, ultimately, um, they don't have to do anything, but I think it's, it's prudent that. As a council, the committee, the, the trust is made aware that there are some concerns and it probably needs to have a look at itself. And that information shouldn't come to a council workshop. There's no reason why we can't have both, um. But I think we need to support that announcement. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Murphy, councillor Shan, sorry.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, and thank you councillor Martin for, um, raising the issue, um. As we discussed before the meeting, I, I won't be supporting the motion, um. I think before we make any decisions or, or rephrase, before any decisions are made regarding investigating, um. Moving the trust fund committee to the Home Hill Committee under the National Trust. Um, any of those decisions, I, I, I think I would like, um, us as a council to discuss. Before we start investigating that formally with the, with the trustees, um. In relation to the lack of, um, funds which have been granted from the trust. I agree that is an issue and there was a, a very elegant solution on the table I felt recently, which had been, um, prepared by, um. Council staff. So, yeah, work was underway to sort of address the, um. Restricted nature of the fund and, um, hopefully that workshop can be discussing those options again. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Barney.
Thank you, ma'am. I, I may have missed it in the preamble, um, but how old is the trustee? Did you mention that councillor Martin?
Uh, no, I didn't, but it was reviewed in two thousand and twelve and, uh, I think two thousand and sixteen. Uh, where it became David Alliance Trust Fund in respect of the David Alliance and the reason why other orgies was put by the books. Uh, I think it goes back to about nineteen sixty-five, was known as the Widows Trust Fund. And has it evolved, uh, nineteen eighty-one, uh, to evolve into the mayor's charity trust. Uh, and out of that, uh, what, even though it was restricted, uh, the decision of the spirit of the deed. Uh, was to help those who are destitute, in need, et cetera. And such things as Christmas hampers were bought and provided to service clients, et cetera, uh, along the way. So where it was restricted in the wording, the spirit of what it is all about, if somebody's in need, knocks on your door. You give them shoulder, you don't read the deeds and say, I'm sorry, uh, you're not included in this. But if they need a doctor, you give them medical assistance. If they need water, you give them boiling water. And that's the spirit of the deed and that's why, uh, part and parcel of it is to make sure. That, uh, with the motion that is taken back to the trustees and a revisit.
And, um, so this last review, seven years ago, I.
Two thousand sixteen.
Two thousand sixteen, so, yeah. How often do we normally review public council policies?
Yeah, three, every two years, but just clarifying, this is not a council policy.
Yeah, yeah. So, going off that, it is quite dated, definitely, uh, due for a, a thorough review. Um, it was nodding my head a lot with what councillor Murphy was saying in the, the decision that we make. Obviously, it needs to be agreed upon by the trust, but I think, you know, you've got to start somewhere. And even with, uh, what the deputy mayor was saying, we investigate, I, I'm not. I'm not too bothered if we investigate something that's not really set in stone, that we're going to, um, make those decisions. And also welcome the opportunity to discuss this further, uh, at a workshop. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments from the councillors? Not councillor Martin, bye.
Sorry, ma'am, just a question, um, the council is aware that the notice of motion is on the table. Um, he's there and that there is not, not an alternate notice of motion with respect to going to a workshop.
Thank you. Well, no one has foreshadowed anything, no. Thank you. Councillor Martin to close.
Thank you. Um, thank you for your comments. The thing about, uh, I suppose where. We start to look at, nothing has happened in seven years. We've had two committees, uh, three representatives from councils. And we've had committees prior to that as well. But every opportunity to find out what the trust does and being involved, uh, in the trust or even supporting the trust. Yes, there was a fundraising campaign undertaken two thousand twelve to two thousand seventeen. We had movie nights, we had, uh, the Devonport Raising Cup Game. And everybody knew what the, what the trustee was, uh, and what the purpose was. This is to bring in line, uh, the comments sent from trustees that the manuals do need to be revised. Uh, supposed to be revised every two years. We're three and a half times past that. We go to a workshop and we don't ask this motion to go to the trustees and work with the trustees. Because it is their responsibility, not council's. And that's the clue. If you want to have a workshop being brought up today on what, what the trust does, great. That is a separate issue. And if you want to be brought up, you can also check it on the website and find it. The thing about, uh, investigating, the motion says investigate. Doesn't determine anything. We're going to provide the information for the trustees to make a decision. It's not a decision of council or at a workshop, because no decisions can be made at a workshop. So the information getting provided, that should not deter or stop this motion from going forward. And getting the wheels rolling and getting something done. Because the last seven years, nothing has been done. And if we pull there the line to actually try to instigate, to start somewhere, as councillor Valani says. This is the actual starting point. You delay it and you delay the action. And therefore, I ask you then, will you be at the door handing out water? Being able to provide medical supplies that somebody you need right now needs? Or are you going to wait six months? Of course, that's what you're doing. It isn't outside the remit of council in regards to its administrative, uh. Charter to do for the deed and that is to actually pass this motion on to the trustees. It doesn't need to go to a council workshop to gain approval to go to the trustees, but then to work through. Those five points and to actually, uh, turn the wheels and get it improved. It doesn't need a workshop to do that. The trustees need to do that. They make the decisions. So the powers should remain with the trustees and we provide the background and the information that they require. Those who are not aware of trust and what it does can't actually do that. So I ask that, it doesn't go to a workshop, I ask that we action the motion and that we put the wheels in motion. Uh, to try and get something achieved and make the, uh, trustees aware of their obligations to the, to the deeds. And try and help those that are in need right now and nine and six months time. So I leave it up to you to decide which way you want to go. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Martin. All those in favour?
Aye.
Aye. Against?
Aye.
Uh, I'll shut things, please. All those in favour, councillor Murphy, councillor Volchinsky, councillor Martin, councillor Barney and councillor Moore. And against councillor Hollister, councillor Shan and myself, councillor Charman. Uh, therefore it is going through. Thank you very much. Item four is planning matters. Four point one, thank you councillor Murphy.
I'm just.
I'll just wait for councillor Murphy. That's right councillor. I'm sorry. I'll jump the gun. Uh, I'm now the councillor, it heads to plan, act as a planning authority under regulation twenty-nine. Of the local government meeting regulations twenty twenty-five and the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act nineteen ninety-three for the consideration of all reports under Agenda Section four. Uh, so to a full point, my, if I could have a move, please.
Aye.
Thank you councillor Hollister and a second.
Setting this.
Councillor Hollister and councillor Barney, thank you councillor Hollister.
This is an infill subdivision in East Devonport, making this space, going to follow fourteen dwellings. Which we've added, so I'll just support the recommendation.
Thank you councillor Barney.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, yeah, so fourteen, uh, John Street, oh, sorry, fourteen additional dwellings on John Street in Devonport. Uh, as councillor Hollister said, an infill site, uh, has or was already, uh, approved. Earlier by this council in March twenty twenty-four, um, a slight amendment to that, made with an additional dwelling added. Uh, do note from the, uh, um, uh, design that there's, there's not a lot of. Green space, not a lot of garden, probably a, a good thing that councillor, um, Ennis isn't here to mention about. Um, building nature in, so I'll do it for him, uh, it'd be good to see maybe some little trees around the edges. It, it is worth noting also, so there was one representation, um. Uh, from the proposal and their concerns were addressed in the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the councillors? If not, I'll, I'll ask councillor Hollister to close.
I'm pretty certain we can support this and I just wish that for the next. As I said, we can support this and I just wish that the next infill just now the day would hurry and get done as well.
Thank you. Uh all those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrie and Ennis, like, thank you. Uh with councillor Murphy back in the room, we're moving on to item five, which is the fourth. Excuse us. Thanks to councillor Levini. Levini, you want to ask? So moving on, five point one is the tenure of board contracts. If I could have a moment please. Councillor Moore, councillor Murphy. Councillor Moore?
Uh yes, I'm happy to support that the tenure is over to Garwood Mercedes. Um comes within the budget of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um yeah, happy to support it and that also includes the straightening value of the.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Uh yeah, thank you, Mayor. I was actually really surprised that um what the fail, I was intrigued to actually know how many kilometres run the garbage trucks. I imagine there'd be a few. And to get forty K for that's not bad. Considering it's a garbage truck. That makes, you know, I don't know, I was assuming how good a use a garbage truck. Anyway, um yeah, a good outcome, uh good outcome for the community. I'm glad we didn't go the heavy one. Um so yeah, we'll talk the Garwoods and the um the Dancers and the Eagles have got that sort of, that market all locked up a little bit.
Thank you. Any further comments or uh questions from the council? No, if not councillor Moore, it's closed.
Well, I'm glad we're not garbage truck um experts because councillor Levini and I think the conversation that we didn't think it was very much ready for the the old foot truck. So I know, I'll be there. Close.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry. All those in, uh do I need to write like councillor Levini better? All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrie and Ennis, like, thank you. Um. Item five one choose a tenure of board project, if I could have a moment please.
Understood.
Councillor Hollister and a second.
Understood.
Councillor Martin, councillor Hollister.
This is um the path that was on to Northern Way in Wright Street. So it can be near the pavement and at the same time, the kind of Wright Street's beyond. The pavement was. Appreciate so many say that, do that.
Mister Belch, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mark, for talking. Well, go on, dear councillor.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. Um uh there's no pavement works through the traffic corridor, that there will be a narrowing of um the bike lanes and curb accidents and mine and pavement matching, so. Um but we are aware of the the uh the damage or the tear rationing you're referring to. Very good.
Thank you. Councillor Martin.
Uh thank you, um Mayor. Uh although the own run is covered by the uh budget, uh state vehicle entry point, um. So it becomes within budget. Uh just going to point there where it says about determination of Mersey Theory. It was terminated, of course, it was a lot more cheaper than instead of hoping forty two thousand five hundred and twenty seven dollars. That feels less than twenty percent of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments from the councillors? Councillor Murphy?
Uh yes, Mayor. Um did we receive much feedback from some of the heavy logistics companies in respect to having the raised crossings? As um in that area, uh with respect to this.
Mister Belch, again?
Yes, through you, Mayor. We've been working stakeholders through there. We've got a number of projects underway, so um there's a working group uh that involves, I suppose, the port properties and and um so yes, everybody's aware and they've been involved in the um in the designs, dates of this project.
Thank you. Further comments or questions from the councillors? Councillor Levini's got his.
Yeah. Thanks, Mayor. I was trying to get the map up of that area, just to double check how far the um footpath was coming south to those, does everyone think of the um the traffic lights there at Major Intersection at the start of that entry in East Devonport? And is that pedestrian crossings that extend all the way up to the traffic lights or not quite? Sorry.
Belch, this is busy, I miss not to.
Through, through you, Mayor. Um so this part of the project, um we'll go from John Street through to Northern Way, which is almost the village area, um and we'll link in some existing pathway there to the north. To the south, it'll join up with the state vehicle entry project, which extends across the TT line frontage from John Street all the way through to Anchor Drive. And we have it stopping at Anchor Drive at the moment where it joins into the um the yacht club there. Yeah, so there's a missing bit just through the yacht club, as we work with them in the future to get us through to um uh Renshaw Park.
Yeah, I think it's that Wright Street top uh Talm Street intersection that's um pretty busy. Uh especially for foot traffic and people trying to run and walk their dogs. But um I mean, it's a start. I think uh eventually we're going to have a couple of new spirits um birthed in the Mersey. So it's really important to have a great first impression for our um visitors to the city and to the state. Um so yeah, looking forward to the start of the beautification of that area. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll check. Further comments or questions from the councillors?
Question?
Councillor Hollister.
The lights on the right and Talm Street. There needs to be two lanes of traffic that gets you right into you get to your right into Wright Street. Talm Street. Get it right around. Um that used to be line marked, you know, which are very silly quite some time ago and it's never been very done. So there's there's the right standard for to have the two lanes going around there if they wanted. You can go straight here or you could go two lanes to the right. We're going back a bit.
Again, yeah.
Through you, Mayor. I believe you're talking about um the Talm Street um e- extension as you're heading um eastbound. So towards that commercial area, the centre market.
Yep.
There used to be uh two lanes there, um with the introduction of the left turn into right, there's one lane that extends forward. So I think that is done away with at that point because you've got one lane continuing across the traffic lights and it continues as one lane. Heading in the other direction, you've got two lanes that extend westbound, um along Talm Street, over the intersection, that is two lanes and then that sort of merges um back to one.
Originally, I think. The other left end lane went straight through into Wright Street. And the right end, um it go well. We have two lanes together and the both lanes will go to the right. So I was just wanting traffic for the same thing I'm thinking of in the future.
Just just to finish off, um through you, Mayor.
Please, sir.
The the there's a um a working group for the East Devon Port um traffic and local and state network and and that intersection there is the start of the state network, it extends out onto the glass highway. Um developing state growth, considering, I suppose, with all the growth in that area and all the development at the moment, um what needs to occur, I suppose, to um uh allow for that growth and extra traffic and all those sorts of things. There's a number of um design solutions that you can see.
Thank you. Further comment, questions from the councillors? If not, councillor Hollister to close.
Understood.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Ennis, five point three is the sponsorship agreements for twenty twenty six, if I could have a moment please. So then, councillor Wilczynski, a second to place?
Through.
Councillor Hollister, councillor Wilczynski.
Uh yes, we had a workshop on these and something that's been really hard is um cost of putting on events. And but it's very necessary for our sporting uh ethos in Devonport or the the coast really. Uh and the triathlon to keep on supporting this for our community for wellbeing as well as just a place to come and do great sport with great um eh equipment and Latin grounds. Um eh and I think, you know, um it's worth we have to keep on doing it, just to find, just interesting with being at the uh local government um conference this weekend and, you know, finding ways to help fund community events. Um it's quite interesting and yes, we've got to do that. I think it is a part of our our structure. So um yeah, uh I'd be happy to endorse this.
Thank you. Councillor Hollister?
Yes, thank you. Um our financial assistance committee looks at these. And I think the tennis, you know, so the balls that we've just had this last couple of weeks um show now importantly to the city. I think it's very important economically to, you know, hopefully support it.
Sorry. Thank you, councillor Hollister. Any further comments or questions from the councillors? Councillor Murphy?
Um thank you, Mayor. I'll also be supporting the recommendation that we've said, um having noted that it's supported by councillor Wilczynski mentioned with respect to the thing about having a positive environment in communities and successful communities is the the type of events that it can attract. Um but more importantly, it's about, you know, providing the opportunity for younger people and all people, really, um to actually go and and watch um sport at that elite level. Um it's a bit like Devonport has been for a number of years. It's aspirational type of stuff and I think um you know, the triathlons had such a rich history here in Devonport and and yes, we weren't able to fund the required amount of money that that Atlas was asking for. Um however, um it's not something that we could actually shell. Um we just need to support their going through the processes that they need to go through. Um and then obviously uh at at that relevant point in time, uh come back to council and we may be in a position to support them once they're sort of gone further down the road in um the direction they're going. But the tennis is one that's really, that's starting to sort of to garner some um significant traction, especially from a spectator perspective and all the um juniors. Um and I think that it's fantastic that we can actually um provide support to that type of event where we can, you know, young kids can go outside and and watch high high quality tennis um without having to leave our community. So yeah, um that's something that our council does very well in supporting um international, national and interstate events. And I think it's something that um we should continue to do and and this is part of that continuation. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments from the councillors? Councillor Levini?
Thank you, Mayor. Calling a bit of what councillor Murphy's just said then, that the the Devonport triathlon has such um renown around the state and um throughout Australia. Like, I I'm struggling to think of another triathlon event in Tasmania. I mean, I'm sure there's others, but none that would have the um the prestige and the um we definitely don't have the the sight and scenery as we have here in Devonport. So I think it's great and exciting that we're um um actively going after a World Cup bid in twenty twenty seven and I'm hoping that um the future council uh can help support um that business, go after that uh bigger World Cup event because it's only going to um benefit the city. And I know it's not the same organisation, but I think last Friday, there was the all schools triathlon, same same area and there was uh students from high school that went and participated, but there was many others I saw um light up my Facebook feed from all over the state that had travelled for that event and a- again, it just makes you um so proud because the Bluff is such a beautiful area and it's it's ideal. Um obviously, the school age kids that are probably barely waiting out in that frigid water all the way through to world class athletes. Um so fully supportive. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Further comments or questions from the councillors? Councillor Martin?
Uh thank you, Mayor. I've been supporting the motion. Uh I like uh councillor Levini. I think that uh councillors uh should be bold. And we have been bold over the last uh fourteen, fifteen years in regards to leading city, which I believe we've just won. Uh a couple of prestigious awards for ten years of leading city. Uh and that only goes about if you're being bold and you take that between your teeth and go forward. Uh we can't risk risking on a lot of levels and supporting these types of events with the opportunity to attract a world event. I think it should be well and truly on our radar and with the way forward, how we might be able to not only help, but also secure such an event and bring Devonport onto the international world map. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments from the councillors? Councillor Shum?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm supporting previous comments regarding the triathlon and I'd like to give a shout out to the um Devonport Tennis Club. Um that's a a little club on the move. They're doing a lot of work at Grasshopper's Level. Um and while we uh weren't able to accommodate the the four requests this year, I hope that um council can continue to work with them. Um again, the the triathlons, all those events, um the bowls, I'm sure that'll come up. Um I've been sort of doing new vox pop with uh businesses over the last couple of weeks and it's so good for the local economy as well as um engagement in um viewed sports. So really happy to be uh supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments from the councillors? Not, I would love to counsel Bill Chiswick.
Consider it first.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrie and Ennis, like, thank you. Five point four. Um just councillor, you just want to explain your reasons for departures.
My reasons for departures, I um felt to clear at the beginning of the meeting that I sponsor this event from time to time. So I'll be leaving you there. Thank you. And apologies for my focus.
Thank you. And so fine trade for amendment to pay one skin partnership agreement. You have a recognition there about you have a moment please. Councillor Moore and councillor. It was so wonderful. Gosh.
It's certainly a very dangerous spot there, councillor Levini.
Yeah, that's just beautiful. So councillor Moore, I'll give that to you. Councillor Hollister, as I think you know, don't rush. Thank you, councillor Moore.
Uh thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think this is such an exciting event for our city. I'm very happy to support the amend the amendment to our agreement. Um it is an extra five thousand dollars funding plus the change from twenty hours um the technical support to a monetary contribution. But I just want to say, as a councillor, I would like us to do as much possible to support this event. It's a niche event that gets so many international, interstate um people coming. I'm hoping that when we had our beautiful workshop, that um the people that came to talk to us take some of our feedback about the great photos that they could get in and all of that kind of things. Uh with their beautiful um dresses and wear glasses, yes. Um also a shout out last year, the exhibition that was in Markets Square was just incredible and the amount of people that that to put on and to create the forest that was, was just amazing. So yes, very happy to support this amendment.
Thank you. Councillor Hollister?
Yes, I believe this is probably our brilliant art project. I think um what hangs off this, like the gala and the whole way gives us fantastic coverage, probably even around the world, not just here. It's probably ended this from various countries. And I think this is probably even more important, my thought is, for our object. Uh powerful support.
Thank you. Further comments or questions from the councillors? Councillor Martin?
Thank you. We're sort of supporting the the motion. It's great to see that we're uh once again supporting the arts as well, not just sport as um sometimes uh seen as. And I think that's very important as councillor has over the years promoted the arts and become a major centre. All the arts, especially through the Art Work Hall, the regional art gallery and the staff of councillor. I think this is a
I think this is a wonderful event, one that's very creative and also provides uh imagination to anybody who turns up to it. What can be created with a house or a garden. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments from councillor Murphy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh I think this um kind of a coup again quite a few years ago, when we we managed to secure this event from our our wonderful friends a little bit further west. Um and I think the partnership that we established with the organisers has just been fantastic. And the fact that we have the facilities and the infrastructure uh here um eh eh to to put this event on and, you know, I've never been one to admit that this is my jam. But um, you know, it is um definitely something that really provides an uplift into our community. Um and I think that it's of such a benefit that we should, we should fight tooth and nail to make sure that we keep them. Um because I think it is, is that is such a good event. And I think, um, you know, it it's, yeah, definitely value for money, hands down, is being the top three for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Councillor Holster? Oh, sorry.
The staff is so good. Um I think this is an event we can hang more like a better weekend or better week, if there is.
Where do we go with that? Was wrong.
Uh thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Um councillor Holster, we've been making um our department with Lindell Thorne and the organisers to understand what additional community events we could be um pairing with. They were interested in coming along to explore everything uh to potentially um engage with the community and attract more volunteers. Um so having paper making, looking at how we might be able to book them into our community houses and bring some of the community level paper making um skills so that we get um sort of full spectrum of community input.
Yeah.
Thank you. Further comments? Councillor Bill Chinski?
Thank you, Mayor. It's is number one. It is an awesome event. And if anyone hadn't looked at it, you can't believe that a piece of paper can make a hat or a necklace or earrings or a dress and they wear it. So it's held together and some of it takes like months to pull this together. Internationally renowned, um it's awesome. It definitely needs complete support. And if we can do more, we should do more. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments?
Further question?
Another question?
On the roll. Do the modeling agencies do the actual modeling of the things?
Right, three, Mayor. I give the used any modeling agency a font system.
So rose.
I'm here on switch.
Um do you have one here that they use two bows at the top? Oh, good. Thank you. Any further comments? Uh if not, I'll ask councillor Moore to disclose.
Bring it on now. You're close.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Very unanimously. Okay, councillor Shane, you can turn to the fold. Moving on to six 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 five point five, which is the Mercy League Industrial Land Study. Uh all the information is there. If I could have a moment, please.
Same move.
Councillor Murphy, councillor Sander, councillor Chinski, councillor Murphy.
Um thank you, Mayor. This has been an extensive process and and it is, it's probably something that um really promotes the sort of direction in which our region wants to head. Um during look at the minister, um spoke to his preferred focus. Um he's looking to regionalise, probably more of a regional focus with respect to a number of particular issues. My only fear um is is the fact that um we need to drive and have this action sooner than what it will be. It's great that we've done the work and everything else, but it'll end up in, the problem is the system that's broken. It'll sit there for the next couple of years and time will go by, things will change. Um councils will change and who knows what may happen. Unfortunately, the only losers in this will be our region. Because the system is broken. Um it's the the work that's gone into this really pointed out some significant opportunities, specifically within the airport precinct. Um and i- if anyone's been to the airport lately and have seen the growth in that precinct in the last ten years, imagine what it could be in the next five years. But it's going to take three or four years before we get support from government, RAN coast authority and everyone else that wants to have a bracket, before anything will happen. And unfortunately, it's a sad and dark end of the system that we've got at this particular point in time. Unless we can influence change at the state government level, um I fear that this is going to be another report that's going to sit on the shelf of a great body of work. But because things are changing so rapidly, um a lot of that work, by the time it's time for implementation, it's going to be outdated. So let's do more work. So congratulations to all involved. And it was, it's really positive the fact that all councils were able to work collaboratively with respect to clean this body of work together. And and exactly right, it's just a shame that, you know, we're able to achieve that quickly. But all of a sudden, we're going to hit slow rate now and we can't implement it quickly. Because the implementation needs to happen now, not in twenty four months, not in thirty six months, because this will be outdated. So it's been great, fantastic. I'll support it. I'll put it to all my fellow councillors for endorsement. But don't bank on seeing it happen very quickly, which is sad, in my opinion. And and the reason why I say that is at least it's as minute as it, someone out there might pick up on it and we might get a bit of pressure put on. But, yeah, I'm only going to refer back to how long to take the COVID coast authority, and it still hasn't finished, some truck washes. Took years, still taking years. So, you know, um yeah, look, great body of work, but I'm not holding it brief.
Councillor, councillor Chinski?
Yes, I um agree with councillor Murphy. Uh the minister spoke well about the region. And it was really great that we've got an MOU to support that area, four councils working together. Uh maybe we need to push, don't know how we push for it to continue. Um so we don't wait twenty four, thirty six months as the councillor Murphy tells me it's going to do. Um I'm an EU on council, so probably don't know that that is the case. Uh push it, keep it going. We're a region and uh look, I think we've been on looking a bit wider and being the leader. That's what I said. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments from the councillors? Councillor Holster?
Think um we did all the work last month, was trying to get the boat to appear from two, three lanes through the airport. All the plans and subdivisions and that were all set up. And one of the main reasons I got knocked back by the tribunal is that they reckon there was too much light industry to bring in. And I think that's got nothing to do with what's in the team. And I believe, hopefully, that the current minister is better than I've heard of any previous minister. That's probably saying a bit. And I think if we don't get some satisfaction from the tribunal, we should be going to the minister. And that's maybe what we shouldn't do last night, because I don't think the reason that they go, they're not going ahead with it was legitimate. So maybe we're going to use the politicians.
Thank you. Further comments from the councillors? Councillor Martin, sorry, I can't see.
Thank you, Mayor. I need to be a lot.
Thanks.
Um I certainly endorse uh councillor Murphy and his comments as well as councillor Holster. Um I think that we shouldn't be hiding underneath the bushel. And it's great that all councils have been working together. Now councillor Murphy mentioned the airport. And I think that uh opens up the door, as we have always pushed. That perhaps as this take up and considerable time as uh off that ends run our own race to be able to attract more people uh to this area. In regards to stuff like the truck wash, um I was fortunate enough to be in a position to actually get funding for the truck washes. And that was back in two thousand and eighteen. So seven years, keeps on popping up, seven years, I don't know in each, but uh it just keeps on popping up. So and so that if we push hard enough and represent ourselves in a positive manner, that the minister of planning will take it on board, the credit coast authority, as it should, uh push on the heart for the four councils to send. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments from the councillors? Councillor Shane?
Thanks, Mayor. Um some interesting stats in the report that the the councils that were part of the Mercy League Industrial Study represent sixty percent of the population in the northwestern, western regions. And represent ten percent of the statewide population growth twenty twenty five to twenty twenty four. So the reason for those stats is I do think we have clout, we do have a voice and we can push and we can get momentum. We just need to be very focused and very vibrant on getting it done and um um as one of the other councils mentioned, you know, we'll go through the traditional means, but at at the at high level is not beyond us either, something we do very well. Um at the end of the day, you know, this is, this is the economic growth that we desperately need. The opportunity is there. We know, we know that we can get that land um developed very, very quickly due to its um logistic benefits. Um and and just the regional attraction that Devonport has at the moment is a testament to that. You know, um the councillors involved in Mercy League Study. But um, yeah, I I think um we as a council need to um confirm our resolve and our commitment to move this forward. So there should be mucking around when you've got these sorts of assets that can be developed for the benefit of everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Further comments? If not, I will ask councillor O'Leary.
Um thank you, Mayor. And and I suppose my level of cynicism, um it comes back to, if you look at the regional language strategy, um yeah, that can't be kicked down the road for the last two and a half years. And it's achieved nothing. And and I thank councillor Shane for pointing out those statistics. However, with the continuation or continual change of government and the fact that we, the revolving door of ministers, they rely so heavily on the bureaucracy who wouldn't give a two boots with respect to what happens here in the North West Coast. And that is where the system is broken. You know, and I take councillor Martin's point with respect to the airport, absolutely. Um we mostly live in a life, what if you do that airport would be significant. And that would only see that whole precinct flourish and benefit the entire region, not just Devonport. Um with respect to this opportunity, one of the things that a lot of people don't realise, and if you look at our light industrial subdivision, let's let's take Elizabeth Street, for example. A lot of light industrial in there. It's now not becoming fit for purpose. It's becoming old, it's tired. A lot of those buildings aren't big enough for the businesses that operate out of them, you know. And I I think providing an opportunity for that particular growth only provides the opportunity for more infill residential land for people to live in houses within the city, within close proximity of the CPDs. So, you know, and and with all due respect, I think Minister Vincent, um yeah, really nice bloke, fairly experienced, but has made it very clear that he will rely on the process. And the process is the thing that is broken. And yes, we are very good at advocating to state government and executives, but there's no doubt about that. However, I don't think that those boffins understand the numbers with respect to what councillor Shane should put up with uh around our growth rate, around the fact that, you know, the population density and and the size of what we are as a region. Um, you know, it's it's very frustrating that that a local government and 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 great powers of local communities will invest in a fantastic body of work that makes a huge amount of common sense, but then has to go through the arduous, slow paced process of dealing with the planning commission and with every other bureaucratic office, lather, sit around over um before we ever get any action. And at some point in time, it has to come to an end. And, you know, if I don't, I don't expect the minister would be sitting there watching us tonight. It'd be good if he was, because I think, um, you know, I don't think I'm the only one that has that little frustration. So with that, Mayor, fantastic body of work, consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Very unanimously. Uh six is information, six point one is workshops and breaking tip, both have a moment, please. Councillor Vardy, the second one?
Second.
Councillor Martin, uh councillor Martin?
Yes, Mayor, the workshop agenda is there for noting.
Thank you. Councillor Martin?
Uh I endorse councillor Vardy's uh but I missed.
Thank you. Further comments or questions from the councillors? Councillor Vardy, do you close, please?
Consider it closed. Thank you, Mayor.
All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Very unanimously. Six point two is the mayor's month that reported by the remote place. I know. Councillor Shane, the second one?
Second.
Councillor Murphy, councillor Shane?
Thank you, Mayor. Busy, ma'am. Hope you're ready for a busy Christmas and fun. Um I just wanted to give the shout out to um the Chamber of Commerce Business Excellence Awards. Um kick started after a, what, ten plus year homes? I'm not sure. But anyway, it was a crapper of an event. Um sold out and uh Black Tide Gala. So many businesses still represented there. And um it was wonderful to see um some of our local talent be rewarded um with uh these awards for excellence. So um it took a lot of work and the change of volunteer committee largely. Um the committee gave up a lot of their time to make it a a big success. But um the feedback from um not only the winners, which general people like me that attended was outstanding. So wish them much success moving forward. I have no doubt that will become a fixture for New Orleans. Thanks.
Thank you. Well noted too. Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Uh yes, Mayor, I'm going to give a chocolate to someone who can pick out your nominee in the mayor's report. She's trying to fluff it up a little bit. She's busy enough. She doesn't need, you don't need to make yourself very busy, Mayor. But I'm not going to mention it because of the sensitivity around it, but I'll give someone a chocolate if they were.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyway, any further comments from the councillors? Not a lot of councillors. You can close. Consider it closed. Thank you. Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Very unanimously. Thank you. Six point three is the CEO's report. If I could have a moment, please. That is councillor Murphy and councillor Martin. Thank you, councillor.
Uh um yes, Mayor, I I just one thing out of his report, I I noticed that um the CEO attended Memento Fundraising Barbecue, but he hasn't committed to the cause, Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Moore?
Thanks, Mayor. Um I noticed the rotation for staff members over thirty years. I'm just wondering, how many, like, do we have a lot of people that have been here over thirty years, sir, councillor?
Absolutely, aye.
Thank you. Um great, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions from the councillors? Councillor Holster?
We had to use element to get the standing from to get it passed, lots of five years on. to get it passed, lots of trials and it all. It's taken too much hours, it's sort of, it'll need you. Is there a pathway through the, some of those things like, yeah, like industrial areas?
Yeah, through you, Mayor. You mean the state of your suit, I mean. It went through legislation, yeah. Uh, I guess that was a special case, but yeah, certainly we're advocating with the government around trying to get some residential land for his own. There's no reason why we couldn't uh, try the same approach for industrial land. That's how successful that would be, I can tell, but that's an option.
Uh, well, yeah, but. Another question too, housing choices, have you got some parcels I had around in the past that building on? I don't seem to be doing anything if they've got no money.
Oh, this is scary.
Uh, through you, yes, yes, um, councillor Holst, housing shows have had some developments approved, um, for engine also. Planning approval. Um, there are some challenges with funding, particularly social affordable housing at the moment and accessing some of the funds that have been attributed from the federal government. I think one other challenge for the community housing providers is that they're still reliant on an allocation of, uh, white list residents. Uh, so there is still process delays there. I think certainly the escalation cost in the construction sector is a challenge for some projects for residents. But housing choices do fund their own projects, they're nationwide. And developer and owner operator of social and affordable housing, so they're very capable of organisation. Uh, but they certainly still do require partnering with homes to us. We say in terms of, um, social housing, uh, residents and in there.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions for the councillors? If not, I will ask councillor Martin, please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I suppose it's worth, um, just with respect to, uh, highlighting five point two in the general industry report with respect to the Strivers League Club, um, being budgeted around their experience in their development and the, the, the CEO, sorry, the CEO, uh, has advised them of that the council will cover that additional expenditure as we should. Um, and I'd also just like to congratulate some of the other members of our executive team executive staff with respect to their commitment to November. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Very unanimously. Uh, six point four, not the operational, or should we call them these, oh, please? Here we go. Councillor Barney, you chucked it up nicely, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a bit disappointed councillor Murphy didn't, uh, notice the effort I put into my top lip, but I guess I should have shaved. Um, again, I should have shaved again this morning, you know, I said, make it up. So it's quite a bit, uh, in the operations report as per usual. Uh, I'd like to highlight, and I think it was mentioned earlier, the TAS tourism, TAS tourism awards. Um, the city won a silver award, presumably that's the best tourism, small city, something along that. And also a silver award for the Parramatta Convention Centre, so again, just highlighting great, uh, work that the team does in order, even just to enter those awards, presumably that's a huge body of work. And it's not just a, a matter of pressing, uh, copy and paste from last year, um, because we're always improving those areas, so. Great reward for, um, the city as a whole to recognise that those TAS tourism awards. Um, this is going back, it seems like forever ago now because the weather's so nice now, but that, uh, storm that we had, uh, last month along Victoria Parade and the size of those trees, a, a real shame that we, we lost a couple of, um, I don't know how old those trees were, it's certainly older than me. Um, but what was really, um, pleasing and it was that I'm pretty sure that was a Friday night, I think it was Saturday morning, a lot of that, um, had already been cleaned up. I know uh, Park Run ran as, as normal, uh, so incredible effort from the works department. Uh, I know Mr Lowe's here tonight, so if you can pass that on just as speed, which, um, that was cleaned up, it was fantastic, thank you. Um, this is a, a personal anecdote, but, um, as part of my, uh, mother in law passing, uh, recently, uh, my family inherited a chihuahua. And I didn't know it at the time, but, uh, she's an incredible escape artist. And, uh, earlier in the week, uh, my chihuahua escaped. Uh, he included in the dog at large for next month, presumably. Um, not only did she escape, she, she got, uh, must have been whilst backing out the driveway, so I took my youngest swimming, came back an hour later, the chihuahua has vanished. Uh, I'm looking around the backyard under trees, she's old, presumably that we may have, uh, lost her as well, but, um. I didn't call my wife straight away, I put up a post on Facebook. And, uh, within fifteen minutes, I had a, a message from one of the animal control officers who had um, gone to our local vet to collect, uh, the chihuahua. And, uh, she said on the phone that she was about to take her out, um, to the pound. Uh, she is registered, but unfortunately that's still in the frog, I haven't, um, uploaded the agent on that. But anyway, the, uh, the canine van with the, 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 the yute turned up out the front. And I'm like, wow, that's a bit of overkill for this, like, little bread loaf of the chihuahua, but she was actually sitting on the, uh, on the front passenger seat with, uh, the control officers. And, and the way they handled that, that whole interaction. Um, really sympathetic to the fact that she isn't, uh, we haven't transferred that registration, but, but understood. Um, and we will, yeah, just a great interaction. So again, uh, thanks to those animal control officers for returning uh, one of our prized possessions now. Um, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Barney, look after that dog.
Yeah.
Um, councillor Moore, top that.
Yeah, have a go after that. Um, I just wanted to highlight three things. Um, one is the East Devonport Job Sport, which was a fantastic event. I've been the last two years and there seemed to be so many more people with apprenticeships um, there this time, lots of people there, so it was a great event. Um, I wanted to highlight the Spring Fling, there was lots of people and very popular characters flew there. Um, it's really nice that Devonport is putting on things for different demographics of people and that was definitely a young families vibe. Um, even like the weather wasn't fantastic, it was pretty windy that day. And the people lining up for all the rides, it's a really nice event. So encourage us to keep looking at the different demographics that we can hit. Um, so say something like the Jazz Festival obviously hits probably our older, uh, older demographics, so it's nice to do something for young families. And I'd love to see something more for the teenagers that we teach. Um, also the repairs lunch, I, I really enjoyed that again, I sat with all the people, and, um, they loved seeing the photos on the screen of what was before and what is now. Um, I do have one question and it's come up from tonight's questions from the gallery. Just looking at parking and the comments were obviously about paying Avenue Car Park. I'm just wondering if somebody can talk to that, because that's not reflected in the, um, in the revenue.
Uh, through you, Mayor.
Through you, Mayor. Um, I think that I'll take the opportunity obviously to speak to those women that came and spoke at council tonight uh, to fully understand their concerns, but we've certainly noticed, uh, since we made the, the council made the decision to remove the six dollar um, parking in, in the Marseilles car park, that it's pushed, um, some all day workers to those that, that couldn't sit down to buy a monthly permit, Main Avenue and Toowoomba Street. So those two car parks are getting quite, quite full. Um, you will know, I do think I put it on the team site for councillors that we have now opened up the car park down opposite the Alex Hotel for the next few months until construction starts. And, um, that is six dollar all day parking, which enables workers to park down in there. Um, which will be summer leave, um, for that, for those new to the public.
So, just to clarify, so it's not, is this because it's a month behind that we're not seeing that revenue for the paying car park, or do you believe that maybe it's, we won't see that recently?
Through you, Mayor, uh, you're correct, the figures are a month, month old. Um, and equally, um, the, we did budget expecting that Main Avenue would be fairly utilised, so we won't necessarily see any great shift in, um, revenue versus budget.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Moore. Any further comments or questions from the councillors? Councillor Holst?
Don't worry for the parking. Just got everywhere on my walk around town, definitely open. Like, I get rid of it open, it's not always serious. So it's easy, but you have to have it in the park in twenty years. That would cancel for a while and it costs you about several years when you just get out and walk away, so. And we're doing, we need to do more education with the party, I think.
Through you, Mayor. Uh, we are continuing to, um, provide both staff on the ground. Although they can't be in every street all of the time, all of the day. Um, we are continuing to provide information to people as we can, we've updated our website. But also welcome to any suggestions that people might have, uh, where we might be able to, um, target any audience that may not have been reached. Uh, I was speaking to a gentleman today who is involved in council, uh, and he had absolutely no idea that parking had changed. Which I felt, found quite interesting given, A, well read, all of those things. Um, and involved in the council, uh, to not have any idea that parking's strange is quite amazing considering the amount of feedback we've been receiving.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Good. Councillor Barney, there, or can we not?
Thank you, Mayor. Certainly not bring my hand up to do this, but I believe the meter maids were pretty popular on the Gold Coast, helping people with parking. So maybe not that, but maybe dressed up as a Tasmanian devil or something, I'm, I'm thinking, not putting my hand up. Uh, but there is a lot on the horizon, uh, in December. Uh, and I'm looking forward to the most is the, uh, gingerbread, gingerbread hunt. Again, that was great with the, uh, the boys last year and, and getting around the city and visiting shops that we would normally go and see. Uh, certainly that time of the year, Kelly made a mistake of putting Christmas tree up two weeks ago, so we are well and truly festive in my house. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Barney. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Very unanimously. Thank you. Seven is close session, if I can move a place.
So moved, second.
Councillor Barney and councillor Martin, councillor Barney?
Uh, me and the procedure, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Martin.
Nothing worse.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from the councillors? See if you can ask councillor Barney to.
Consider it closed, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Very unanimously. We're moving into closed session, um, finishing this meeting at seventeen. Thank you.